The first is a public hearing of the 21 Bates Street variance. Route 85 Realty Corp., Real Box 444 Mendon requested variance, relief from Article 2, Section 2.01 of the bylaws which require lot sizes of 60,000 square feet and a 200-foot frontage, among other criteria. Applicant requests variances to create two lots on the property. Lot frontage, Lot 1, from 200 to 162 feet, 10. Lot 2, from 200 to 146 foot, 6. Area from Lot 1, from 60,000 square feet, 25,945 square feet. Lot 2, from 60,000 to 27,862. Lot width, Lot 1, from 200 to 138.05. Lot 2, from 200 to 159.67. The property is located at 21 Bates Street. Accesses map 19106-21 and can be viewed at the town clerk's office. There's a, let's see, letter from the Town Amendment Water Commission to Route 85 Realty referencing the ZBA variance request for 21 Bates. The Mendon Water Commission was informed of your recent application to the ZBA for a variance to divide 21 Bates into two lots. Please be advised under the terms of our contract that the Town of Hope Dale supply water to Mendon. We are not permitted to supply water to any new lots not already included in the contract. The same issue was recently discussed with Hope Dale when they denied a request to serve 33 Cape Road, which was split from the existing 35 Cape Road at the time. They made it very clear to us that they will not permit any new connections outside of those listed in the current contract. Additionally, it is a violation of our contract to allow water service to be extended beyond the permit of one lot to serve another. If this variance is granted, the existing connection at 21 Bates may continue to supply the existing residents. However, any new lot created cannot be connected to town water or has to be served by a private well. And Jan Byer, yeah, from the Town Amendment Water Commission. And the subject is 21 Bates Street. This is map 19, Lot 10621. Zoning district is rural residential. Nature of relief requested. Zoning bylaws which require 60,000 square feet of lot area, 200 feet of frontage, and 200 feet of lot width, among other criteria. The applicant requests the following variances from Section 2.01 of the bylaws in order to create two lots on the property. Again, this is repeating what I already said initially in the opening statement, which basically drops the frontages down from 200 feet to 162 feet and 200 feet, 246.6 feet. And the lot areas from 60,000 square feet, 25,945, and 60,000 to 27,862. The evidence to support the grant of variance, the lot is significantly larger than most of the other existing lots in the neighborhood and could be divided to create two lots more in keeping with the size and shape of the neighbors without being more detrimental to the neighborhood. Should this variance not be granted, the lot area will be underutilized in comparison to the other properties in the neighborhood, thus creating the hardship. At first we'll have...
Joseph Manthellis, on behalf of the applicant. I'm an attorney. My office is in Milford. John Manhat is here also, who is the property manager of the applicant. I'd like to take a moment to thank the board for arranging a meeting in these difficult times. The manner in which you're doing it is unique and appreciated. Spending a lot of time, John, watch that quote, spending a lot of time on Zoom, which is somewhat difficult presentation. If anybody can't hear me because of the mask, I do have a loud voice and I can turn up a couple of on tapes and I'm doing that. So if anybody behind me can't hear me... These are a lot, too, yeah. Okay. So again, I thank the board and I appreciate the fact that people come out under difficult circumstances in these times. The applicant owns a specific property on Bates, which is an area in Mendon that is sold for 60,000 square foot lots, notwithstanding the fact that of the approximate 30 lots, 31 lots that were reviewed in the general area of the house, only 22% of them actually have the area that is required under the town zoning by law. So what you've got is you've got a section of the town of Mendon with a significantly high requirement for land area that is functionally not in accord with what you see in the more traditional areas of Mendon that are a little bit more remote, not so heavily traveled as Bates. In fact, the applicant's first review of this property was to go in and make a significant major renovation to the house and increase it probably up to a five-bedroom home with a three-car garage and make it more in keeping with some of the more estate-sized houses that you see predominantly in the town of Mendon over the last few years. As an alternative, because of the fact that the first house, the one that's in existence, is serviced by Milford Town Water, we looked into the possibility of dividing the lots and creating two more affordable homes. So the lot that we'd like to create, which is Lot 1 on your plan, Lot with the house on it, the existing house, is designated as Lot 2. So the new lot, the new lot, I call Lot 1, that house would be because it will be serviced by a septic system and a well. And we have been able to identify an area to put a well in so that it will not violate any health codes, it'll be far enough away from any of the existing septic systems in the area and far enough away from the existing septic system on Lot 2. But because of the area and the DEP requirements, the new house, or the lot, the house on the new lot, would end up being a smaller two-bedroom home, as is the existing house. And what we felt was is that this might provide some kind of an alternative living situation for a young family and more of a starter home in Mendon, which frankly is hard to come by in not only the town of Mendon, but in any of the surrounding towns. We see more and more young families are getting pushed into townhouse developments because of the fact that it's just so difficult to find any land to be developed. So again, looking at it, my client, I think you know, is very interested in beautifying property and has a flair for making properties attractive. What we would anticipate again would be to create two lots, each of which would have a two-bedroom home, and to be able to provide just a little bit of a different housing stock for young families in the town of Mendon. We were aware of the letter from the Hope Dale Water Company. I've been through that before with Hope Dale. I know that that's not going to happen. There will not be any water on this house, which is why John spent the time to make certain that we could put a well there. Again, this is a little bit out of the traditional request that your board gets, but I would remind this board that you have the powers of equity, that you can shape remedies for what you might believe is in the best interest of the community that you serve. And to the extent that you sit as a board and believe that the best thing for the town of Mendon is to maintain 60,000 square foot lots and to have significantly large homes being built in this town, then so be it. That is your prerogative. But I also believe that your reaction in the past to projects that make sense for the town of Mendon has always been one of a conciliatory nature and one that I think has been well reasoned. And we would ask if you apply that reasoning to this particular situation and allow us to split the lot and create two homes, again, both of which would be two-bedroom homes, as opposed to going in and completely rehabilitating the house that's there, expanding it into a four- or five-bedroom home with a multi-car garage. Again, we believe that that's a more appropriate way to develop property in the town of Mendon for this particular lot, and we ask that you give us your approval. We've got some plans that we can show you that show you the size of the other lots in the neighborhood. I believe that John has distributed to you, and you will see that even if the board were so diligent to allow us to split the lot, the two lots that we have are still going to be bigger than many of the lots that are on Bates. And so again, we don't believe that this is a disproportionate area variance based on the other sized lots in the area. If we were sitting on a roadway in Mendon and all the lots were 60,000 square feet, I don't think I could say that to you. But again, Bates Street, one of the older streets, one of the earlier developed streets in the town, does have a significant number of small lots. Again, we believe with today's technology, we can build a septic system on a new lot without any interference to any of the existing properties. And again, we'll be building a two-bedroom home that we don't think will be anyway, will not derogate from the intent of the zoning by law, but will actually provide some kinds of alternate housing. John, is there anything on the plans you'd like to point out?
The only thing I would like to point out is the area of the well that we need to get this on. I wasn't aware of the water company, but I was just showing the public media. But we do have like over 150 feet from this septic system and 150 feet from this septic system. So we do have room on the lot for a while in the air. Also, I had talked into this neighbor when we were renovating this house. He has some water, water problems, so I had told him that if we did do something on this lot, it could underdrain here, it would be uncomfortable to tie that into the street drainage. There is no place to dake like it. We wouldn't be doing an infiltrator unit to recharge and run it from the roots, so we wouldn't be adding any more runoff onto the surface of the lot. This driveway ends right here. This driveway ends right here than the driveway that we mentioned right here. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. This lot has an 100 and some odd feet, 16 feet of frontage. And with the two-bedroom houses, we thought it would be appropriate to try to ground another lot and put a two-bedroom house here that would be a little more... There is a lot of... So this water service now is a water service here in... It is a ground service. So I don't believe there's any... So this is a wall here, and it goes up. Before it gets to the wall, it comes back up, but he has a lot of water problems, so I had just offered, I said, "Well, maybe an interceptor drain would help here with some of his water problems." I don't believe there's surface water running from our lot onto his. He's had water problems for quite a long time, but I thought that might help.
He had a letter from the ZBA. Did you pick it up?
I did.
I'm going to read this whole two-page letter from the Abada. But it is available for anybody to get a copy of, see the whole thing. The bottom line is, he's against the proposed second house. Basically saying that when he bought his lot, he, in all conforming requirements, the 60,000 square feet, et cetera, and since he had to do it or did do it, he feels that the neighbor should follow the same results. But he does go on and talk about significant water issues that he does say is coming from Lot 21.
Yeah, I don't believe that's the case. If you look at the grading on the lot, there is no... So there was at one time when we first bought the house before we took possession of it, a toilet got stuck in the existing house, and it was an old cesspool that was there and overflowed, and there was water running down. But that was the only time there was water running down. I actually, we actually put the sump pump that's in 21 into an underground infiltrator system now to recharge, so I don't believe there's groundwater coming from our lot into his. There's a hill that goes up where the stone wall is, and I see no way that water can, groundwater or surface water can run onto his lot from our lot. Just so you know. And I do know that his lot is one of...
His is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. His lot is one of the few conforming lots in the neighborhood. His is actually bigger than 60,000, it's 90,000 square feet, but then the neighbors on the other side are 12, 10, all across the street are around 15,000, so we're bigger than all those lots. His is one of the few lots on the street that is conforming, and I do realize that. So I mean, I told him I would work with him to try to do something with the water problem, and I think, you know, some sort of interceptor drain there might help him. So there's a wall here and there's a, it comes up, so the surface water is not getting there, but then his driveway is cut in lower than the wall, so it's probably, you know, you're going to get groundwater that leaches out under the wall and into his driveway because his driveway's sitting low and his house is sitting low. So I think an infiltrated drain there might, you know, an interceptor drain along that wall would help, and we're willing to do that. I had told him when we first purchased the property, I would try to do something for him.
Yeah, I have a question. So of the properties that you highlighted that are not conforming right now, how many of them are pre-existing variances, or how many of them were existed?
I would say they were all pre-existing non-conforming. I didn't go through and see if any of those were granted variances. I would say the bulk of the lots are pre-existing non-conforming lots. So they were probably either before zoning or conforming at one point, and the zoning changed.
The hard trip is that, the hard trip is highlighting that your lot is zoned according to a prior, you can figure it.
Yeah, the hard trip would be you're in a zone where all the lots are undersized, and we don't feel we should be held to the same standard as a 60,000 square foot lot when all the other lots on the road, it's actually 24 out of 31 lots are undersized.
What's the average frontage on all these other lots? The frontage on the other lots?
I believe all of these in this area are 100. Most of these are just over 100. Even some of the ones that have the area are less than 200. I don't know 100% off the top of my head. I did not, I did not put that on there. I can get that for you though, if you, if you want me to. I probably could get it. Oh, I don't have my phone. I probably could get it on my phone right now, but I don't have it. But I believe all these houses in here, these lots are 100, and all of them are about 100.
And so right now, the lot itself is...
Yeah, the lot is 50, it's a little over 56,000 with 316 feet of frontage. So we have an abundance of frontage for that size lot, but we don't have the area.
It's smaller than the bylaws for the single now, right?
Absolutely.
Lot 25, in comparison to the...
I can just tell you, so if you look on here, Lot 25 House is this gray shaded area, that's the house right there, right near the 5. He has a shed to the right, a small shed to the right, and then his house sits right there.
In the future, I keep saying this...
Put it on the other plane.
The houses that are surrounding the applicant's house should be shown.
Yeah, so I know the house on this lot is a little bit onto our property, so this house on this lot is right up against the, right up against the property line. 25, if I were to guess, I would say it's about 80 feet off the property line, 75 to 80 feet off the property. 29 is our lot? Yeah, yeah. Actually, it's Kevin's brother that's in here.
Questions?
I guess the only question I got.
So this house is actually going to grow to a five-bedroom?
Not necessarily, John. I can't say that.
No, it could. A three-bedroom or four-bedroom.
If in my...
Three-bedroom minimum.
Yeah, he might, he might, he might make it bigger, I don't know. You know, we just thought that, you know, a two-bedroom house in Mendon, they're pretty rare commodities. I, you know, we thought it might be, you know, for something around 300 or 319,000 compared to the prices in Mendon, somewhere in that range, hopefully. Yeah, they'd both stay, yeah, the existing one is a two-bedroom Cape now, and the other one would stay a two-bedroom.
We looked at it in a massing sort of view, is that we could create a certain number of square feet within the framework of the existing lot, but what we thought would be again, a more opportune way to develop, redevelop the property, to be able to do a smaller house, two-bedroom, and then provide some kind of start home in the town. That's how we look at this coming forward.
Yeah, so with the type of our populations with 58,000 and change area that we have, you can fit a five, it's basically 10,000 square feet per bedroom, so you could put a five-bedroom house on the lot. Cut them back to all 27, that's, you know, 10,000 per lot, so you could do two two-bedroom houses, one on each, two two-bedroom houses, a two-bedroom on each.
Two, two-bedroom homes.
No, we leave the existing two-bedroom.
That's what I mean.
That's the, yeah, and we would build a new two-bedroom. Yeah, so we would have...
So there is potential of more construction on the lot that wasn't granted?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if we would do that, but yeah, there is potential that we could increase the size of the existing house.
Are two-family structures allowed within the current zoning?
Two, like duplexes? Which we don't have.
Duplexes out of any area. You only re-regulate them by the size of the lots.
Right, so for a duplex, you would need 90,000 square feet and 300 feet of frontage, which we have the 300, but we wouldn't have the 90,000.
So if your concern is not enough for housing, would that be a revenue consider?
Yes. I don't think we want to tear down the existing house. We would have to like connect the two. We would probably consider that, yeah, and do a duplex off of the existing.
Can I make a comment? I think you're talking about affordable houses with deed restrictions. Is that, is that what you're talking about as opposed to affordable based on the fact that it's not big?
Affordable housing, so I can mention in general, it seems like a big reason you're asking for this variance is that not, that this possibly being affordable housing if you were to divide the lot.
All right, I just want to, I want to be clear that I'm not suggesting that the house would be a deed-restricted affordable home. I just want to make a distinction on that. When you have a 40B program or a, some kind of a planned unit development with affordable housing, those houses are deed-restricted so that the owner cannot sell it and make a substantial profit. That is not what we're talking about. We're talking about keeping the price down because the size is down. And the reason I wanted to respond to that is my, in my experience lately with single-family houses that are deed-restricted, the number of people buying those is diminishing because they recognize themselves that they are locked into not making profit. So if someone is trying to do the starter home, an affordable, meaning a 40B affordable home, is not really the avenue to go because when you go to sell it in five years, you can only make one and a half or 2% because of the deed restriction. What I'm talking about more is to provide lower, lower cost housing because it's smaller that would give a starter home, and then that family can sell it and let the price go along with the rest of the market, just for the distinction.
About how far is the house, Lot Number 25, from the property line?
I believe, I believe it's about 75 feet. I can get a better, I didn't bring my phone up, but if you want me to run out and grab my phone. I believe it's, it's at least 50, but I believe it's about 75.
Okay, so but it's not 20 feet or...
No, 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 no. The shed is close, the shed is probably 10 feet off the lot line, but there's a, she has a little shed right here, but the house is 50 to 75 feet away.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah.
It's actually more than a shed.
Oh, yeah, it's like a little garage. Unless he's done something to it, because I think it was a shed when I saw it.
Any further questions?
Are you taking questions from the audience?
Anybody from the audience have anything to say? Any questions? And you have to identify yourself.
Your name, name and address. So each, each time you want to speak, if you want to speak five times tonight, then you have to identify yourself five times. Name and address. 18.
Um, just out of curiosity, how often is the, uh, town water contract renewed? Is it ever?
I'm sorry, what?
The town water contract, is it renewed?
I have no idea. We don't deal with water. It's a separate board. I'm sorry, what? They're already been determined by the town bylaws.
So you want to come up and look closer? It's actually, I believe, 50 in the front and, and 20 around the rest. So yeah, so you're correct. So this is, so this is the setback line here.
Right.
And this is the other setback.
So between the two lots.
Yeah, you'll have 40 feet.
Yep, okay. So this, so I don't, you know, when I look, when I look at this, I just envision, here you are talking about affordable housing. It just looks like to me that this becomes a model home and this becomes a right of way. That probably, I don't know, that maybe within some years, I'll see a street sign across my driveway that's got your wife's name on it. And that we have a whole development of lots 43 and 41.
No, so you would need a minimum of 50 feet to do that, number one.
Okay.
And it would have to be owned, so you would have to take it out of these lots. It would have to be cut out now. So this is just a imaginary line showing the setbacks for the house. Um, when we first bought this, we did talk to David Fernandez in the back about trying to do something there, and he had no intention of selling this. So that is off the table. So we could never, we could never come back. If we wanted to come back and put a road through there, they had, the town would have to own the rights and the road. So you would have to reduce these lots even more, and then you wouldn't have the setbacks. You would need 50 feet from that road to this house and 50 feet from that road to this house. So it can't be done.
Well, this whole house could be a roost for a homeowner.
I don't know. What, why, what would it be a roost for?
So then you could create that right of way.
No, so if, if we wanted to create the right of way, we wouldn't even have to do that. We have 100 extra feet of frontage. We could just come in with a right of way through here.
All right.
I, I just want to explain it to you.
All right.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to cut out the lot. So we did, we did explore that option early on when we bought the property where we're not doing anything back there. I can now show you that.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes.
Sure, right here.
Jay, can you either use a microphone or use this?
Anyway, Jay Moll, 40 Millville Street. Um, I'm just, I'm assuming that the, the buyer knew what the restrictions were in terms of, of zoning when he bought the property. I'm assuming. Um, and I'm saying this because four years ago, uh, I was on the historical commission. We were involved with a situation where a young man had bought one of the historic houses, actually right around the corner, um, on Cape Road and Bates Street. Um, the commission, he was going to destroy the house, demolish the house, and the, the commission tried to persuade him to move the house. He got a lot on Edwards, 38,000 square feet. Um, he was going to pay for the move, which was $40,000 and all the other things that went around with it. Um, and actually, the ZBA denied. These lots are both smaller and, you know, we don't know, he says two family, but he could go up, it could be more than two family, go back more than two, I don't know. I just, I just think that we need to get some priorities straight and not do this. If somebody knows when they buy a piece of property, that it is a certain size for one house, so be it. That's all I can say. As a town government for a long time, it's very discouraging to see this sort of thing happen.
Joseph Rhoades, uh, I'm kind of right behind, uh, Bates Street and, uh, familiar with the property, but, uh, just a couple of general comments. Uh, I went through, uh, the application and, uh, the list of upholders that was a plot, um, supplied with the application, went on the town website and, um, took, um, the lot size information from the tax cards, or the tax cards provided on the town website. So when you're getting that information, um, it appears to me that of the list of upholders supplied, 16, um, I'm sorry, nine of the lots were equal, nine of the existing lots were equal to or greater in size than the lot in question, seven were small. Uh, the applicant is also looking to reduce, I think one lot is being reduced in size 57% from what's required, and the other lot is being reduced something on the order of about 53%. So the, I mean, those are fairly significant restrictions. And to, uh, Jay Moll's point, uh, back a couple of years ago, uh, similar situation existed at the corner of Bates and Edward, and that was, um, and, and that was turned down. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to a house being built there, but only a house because this gentleman's point is really, really valid in that it's, can simply be, oh, maybe in a couple of years, we'll, you know, tear down what we put up and the throughway. And the real prize is the undeveloped land that's behind that house, significant land. And as we all know, the land is very prime, uh, in these parts, and, uh, I would hate to see that, uh, developed. So if only house goes in there, and if in the event that the board were to grant a variance, I would like to see written, right into the variance that it can only be a house, there can be no common driveway, and in perpetuity, no, uh, ability to do anything or to have any access through that lot going into any of the lots behind it. Thanks.
We would have no issue with running the deed restriction by town council to make certain that town council deemed that the restriction effectuates what this gentleman has just asked.
So even if, so what we could do, so honestly.
What would be the access to the real land that you're talking about that you?
Once that second house is built, we have, we no longer have an access there because you need a 50 foot right of way.
I understand that.
And then you need 50 feet back from last.
I understand that. So you, so how many acres are back there, uh?
I, I believe it's, uh, nine or 10 acres back.
So, so there's nine or 10 acres that are basically being. Staying as it is.
It's, uh, him, he owns a small lot up the street. He owns a small lot and a small lot behind him to access that, and he bought that piece back. So he's one of the, he's one of the people that live on, uh.
So, so that.
He can do something, but we have no intention of doing it.
I, I understand.
So if, if it was him doing it.
That isn't where I was going, heading. I, I just wanted to know if we were creating a, a non-accessible lots.
No, 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 he has access to his lot up the street.
Yes, John.
It's my understanding that a deed restriction is only good for the owner that owns it. Once the house is sold, the deed restriction goes away. At least that's what we learned from the commission.
I can respond to that. That is actually not the case. Deed restriction is as good for as long as it says in the deed that it's restricted. I, I, I don't know what kind of a deed restriction you're talking about, but I can tell you that deed restrictions are enforced significantly. And, uh, that a deed restriction that is entered into voluntarily can only be removed if it's conditioned in the variance by this board. So I would suggest that if we were to move forward, and I had anticipated talking about this, that the board do two things. One, make a condition of the variance specifically termed that gets recorded at the registry of deeds, that there be no further subdivision of the lot. And then a deed restriction issued by the owner of the property saying that there would be no further subdivision of the lots. And those are both enforceable by the courts. And I, I, and I, and I'll be honest with you, I do have some knowledge about historic restrictions, and I don't know what you're, what, what you're referencing because historic restrictions are very, very strongly enforced.
Any other questions?
We have two people online that want to, we have two people online that want to, uh, give their thoughts. Because it's remote participation, we have to allow it. Can you un, unmute and you can ask a question? Can he not hear me? Mike Morali.
Can I get your name?
That's during my speaking.
He just said he could hear. My name's Mike Morali. I live at, uh, 31 Bates Street. I grew up there. I still live there now. It's three houses down from, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Lovely's house, which is the one we're speaking about. I, I can tell you some history, there's always been a problem with water running down and, and actually cens the property. It's been rehabbed, it's actually gotten worse in the back of the property. And it actually, uh, it's, the last couple of times we've had rain after this is done, it's flooded out my shed in the back. And I actually had to have a backhoe come in and try to remediate it. Um, I can also tell you that when that house was there, um, Mr. Lovely's son, Leo Lovely, wanted to build the house exactly where they're talking about right now. And this is, this was back in the 1960s or 70s. And, uh, the, the, it, it wasn't done, he had to buy a piece of property, the greenhouse across kitty corner across the street, simply because of the, the, the wet problems and also, uh, the, the owner who built it didn't believe there was enough room to put a second house in there. And all of the houses that are south of that one are all four or five bedroom houses. And it, it just doesn't fit. And I don't think it's going to enhance anything in the neighborhood to, to, to stuff another house in there in between, uh, Neilan's house. And I, I will, I will compliment, uh, Mr. Mayon that, you know, the fact that he rehabbed that house, put a second story on it and put a two car garage on the other side, um, looks fabulous, but I just don't see where there's enough room to, to build another house on the other side. It just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. I think it'll devalue everybody's property.
If, if, this is not legible or is not audible. And if we can't get clear and. If, if we can't get, get it clear so that everybody in the whole room can hear it, all right, then, then we're going to stop it.
Can you get it clear?
Is this any better?
No.
Is it any better now?
You're still coming through garbled. If you'd like, you can call me and I can put it on speakerphone.
Is there a dial-in number? Just to call your number, I can call?
Um, there is a dial-in option.
If you want me to just call your.
It's on the agenda. We can move on to somebody else. So you, there, there's a dial-in number right on the agenda.
Can you give us the number?
Yeah, the number is 1-347.
Oh, boy.
467. 1434. And the conference ID is 261-180-91-pound.
Can you repeat the conference ID? Thank you.
Yep, and, and is this Bob Nealan?
Yes.
You're, I can hear you loud and clear. You can go right ahead if you'd like.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, first, I, uh, I just want to, uh, I could hear Mike, and I want to emphasize that the, uh, the water problem is, does flow from 21 Bates Street. I've walked the property, I've walked on that side of the lot, that lot, that side of the lot is very soft, and the water flows like a river under that wall. There is no question about it. It's been like that. And I also think that Mike has a pretty good point. Somehow or other, it does seem to be worse since the, since the, since the house was rehabbed. Now, um, that just could be a seasonal thing, but this past, uh, maybe five or six weeks ago, we had a pretty good downpour, and it was flowing under the wall into my property and across my backyard. So it's an issue. There's no disputing that. I, I've lived there for 20 some, seven years, and that's been the way it is. It's, uh, so that's.
And the other. Water issue, water issue is flowing through here. It's a dead issue with this board as of tonight. So. It's the water, your water issues to get resolved, it gets resolved at a later date by, by unknown people. I'm not going to take too much time, this board's time discussing the water, where the water coming from or going to.
All right, I have another point. There's a safety issue with Bates Street. First of all, Bates Street, as many of you know, that and particularly.
Most of your, uh, emails sent in earlier, and everybody here, uh, copy, uh, can you? Do our, do our safety concern. So again, I'm not a rehab. So, uh.
All right, then, uh, uh, another comment. The idea of the affordable housing side of it in starter homes, the basis of, uh, the other side, the petitioners' position here, uh, where there's, there's a lot of Bates with small, small homes. Those are starter homes. And they, at the, the Bates Street, it's developed all over, over the.
Bob, you're, you're cutting out.
There are a number of starter homes on Bates Street and throughout the community of Mendon. community of Mendon, already.
I'm asking the conversation going on when you're breaking up. When you're going to, and have little, nothing to do with, with the board's decision, whether the style of the house, number of stories. Those are, are issues. The board really doesn't care about. So, thanks for your call and your email. And again, your email is made probably record and available to anybody to see.
Yeah, we've got.
This is Mike Morally called in on the line. Can you hear me now? So the comments that I have, I've, I've lived in this neighborhood all my life, over 50 years. And my understanding was, the reason they put zoning in town was to, to make a minimum size for a lot. And all of the houses that are south on Bates Street or across from that one, that's being spoken about tonight is the three, four, or five bedroom homes. And some of them have been made larger over time, but they haven't changed the footprint or the, or the lots haven't been subdivided. And when that house was built, the folks that lived in it, the son wanted to build a house right next door. And Mr. Lovely that owned it and his wife didn't allow their own son to build a house there, because there wasn't enough room. And because of all of the water issues, and he ended up buying a piece of property across the street that Mr. Unruh lives at now, and built a house there because his parents said that it wouldn't support a second house. And I do have water problems that come down the back, and they seem to have gotten worse since the house was rehabbed. While I obviously have no issues with the wonderful job that was done on that house. I mean, they, they raised the roof. They put, you know, a two-car garage on the end and, and really rehabbed it and made it bigger than it was and cleared out the lot. It just, it, it, another house on the side of that just wouldn't fit with everything else in the area. And I, I thought there was zoning to stop people from packing things in. I mean, that, the property next door was originally a, a number of mobile homes. And then the, you know, those weren't allowed anymore. And I thought when they put zoning in to make a minimum size, it would stop something like this. Because what's to stop us all from just putting a second house, you know, next to or behind the houses that we've had that we've lived here all these years? I just, I'm, I'm just, don't think it's appropriate.
Just a few other nations, sir. I'm having down that, that street many times, including twice this afternoon. And that whole street is a hodgepodge of different sized houses.
Right, but they were all built before the zoning. I think zoning was put in place to stop that from happening. And the new houses that have been built since there was zoning have been conforming. Armstrong at the end is conforming, and Bob next to it
I can put me in. We've got one more hand raised from Mark Cutler. If, Mark Cutler, you'd like to go Um, hold on, let me unmute. I'm gonna unmute, Mark. Oh, I don't think I have the power to.
Mark, can you unmute? Oh, Mark, can you unmute? There you go. Okay, hi, it's Elizabeth Cutler, 29 Bates Street. Couple things. Number one, the water issue's real. And number two, a question. You talk about the different sizes of the houses in the neighborhood. And are you allowing anybody to subdivide their lot on Bates Street? Because the houses are smaller that are existing. Is this a precedent for this section of town? And if so, the development, if there's a development behind us, in the property behind us, can they make smaller lots too? Because the neighborhood around them is smaller as well. Are we setting a precedent going forward that I can subdivide my own lot, and anybody behind me and anybody next to me can subdivide as well? Thank you.
I couldn't understand what she was saying. You know, she, she has these technical questions. You should begin here with the paperwork, your plans, and outlining it so everybody can intelligently understand what she's talking about.
I mean, I, I could understand her fine. She's asking if this set a precedent with other houses in the, in the.
There's no such thing as a precedent with this board. Each, each decision stands on its own with, with no, by, no precedent acting as the key or the requirement. That's not saying, that's not saying that we haven't set precedents with similar situations. But at any rate.
Um, I think, Anne Mazur is also on the call and would like to say something. She texted me that she doesn't know how to raise her hand on the teams, but she's on the call.
Hi, can I make a comment?
Yep.
Um, I guess my question is, is I don't understand the hardship. The lot was bought, zoned for one house. And so I don't understand what the hardship is. The other smaller lots were grandfathered in. New houses that were built had to meet the zoning bylaws. And the zoning bylaws are written for a reason. But I, I don't, I do not see the hardship in
Thank you for your question.
I think that's, that's it.
Alan, in the future, are we required to, to allow phone, these phone calls to come So we have, so even though we have a meeting here, an open meeting, we're still required Well, some people are, some people are also just lazy about coming.
You can have an open hearing, a fully public hearing, but we're limited to the rights of private size right now. So you can't guarantee that the price is gonna be normal at 25.
Check it out. Afterwards, we can discuss this further.
Chairman, it seems to be an a-hole.
Chairman, I think I was busy scheduling. I was supposed to very quickly.
Senator.
Purpose, that's why the legislature created a zoning board of appeals, where one can come in and make an appeal to vary the circumstances in a neighborhood, on a lot, et cetera, for what we believe is a practical solution to affordable housing and starter housing in the town of Mendon. I recognize that some of the other houses on, on Bates are older and smaller. However, they don't have the benefit of new construction, energy efficient construction, low carbon imprints, and all of the things that we're all going to be concerned about moving in the future. We're in a very difficult time with the COVID situation. I have been consulting with people in the, in the building industry. We think generally in land use law, that the building codes are going to change relative to the manner in which air circulation takes place in housing. And I think that Mendon, like all of the other communities in New England, which tend to be, have older housing stock, we're gonna be left behind as we go forward in this new world. And I think this is an opportunity to create new housing, which is cleaner and provides more efficient energy and better living space. So I, again, I appreciate this board, and I appreciate your staff's diligence in keeping the meeting schedule going so that not, no one defaulted in, in the interim. We delayed our application. We submitted continuances for your board before the COVID because there was an opportune time to have a hearing. I think my client and I and John have the deepest respect for this board, and I'll leave it to your discretion as to whether or not you think this is a good plan. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Hear a motion?
I can make a motion.
Want me to make a motion? Yes. I'll make a motion to grant 21 Bates Street to be divided into two lots of 28,065 square feet and 27,5862 square feet. With the new lot, we address the drainage issues and have a deed restriction on the lot. There'll be no roadway cutthroat. And that'll be a deed restriction to only a two-bedroom home, never to be a three-bedroom. Do you have a second? Okay, so you're not seconding it? And the decision is denied?
Thank, thank the board for their opportunity and, and, and everything.
We're running way behind schedule here. The next hearing is supposed to be at 7:20, Okay, this is Pine Brook Computer, Inc. David Gorbey, President, Franklin, Mass. Request a variance relief from Article 2, Section 201A of the bylaws, which requires frontage for a residential, single-family lot to be a minimum of 200 feet. The petitioner requests a variance on frontage from 200 down to 117 feet. The lot is located on 4.67 acres at 79 Hartford Ave East. Says it's map 13, 14079. A full map with the details can be viewed in the town clerk's office. Nature of the relief requested. Bylaw which requires a, a minimum of 200-foot frontage be reduced. Down to 117 feet. He doesn't, he doesn't repeat that, but that's what it says on the notice of public hearing, that the frontage would be reduced from 200 feet down to 117.22 I'm trying to find the, what page is the hardship described in, sir?
On the attachment, page three, on the letter in support. If you look on page three.
On the application, are they?
This is the letter that started the law at the Robert.
Yeah, kind of.
He says, "The property is unique because of its, the parker fee, shape, and soil conditions. Access to the property is limited to an approximate 50-foot wide, 190-foot long strip of land that has 117 feet of frontage on Hartford Ave East, according to plan. A literal enforcement of the minimum frontage width and driveway requirements of the bylaw would restrict the owner from constructing virtually any dwelling on the property without zoning relief, thus preventing the owner from the full use of its property in the GR/br rural residential zone in the Hartford Ave East neighborhood. It is well settled in Massachusetts that statutory hardship is usually present when a landowner cannot reasonably make uses of his property for the purposes or the manning allowed by the zoning ordinance." I basically jumped. "It is clear that the shape, topically, and soil conditions of the land render it virtually unbillable for single-family use in the absence of zoning relief, thus depriving the owner of the most appropriate use of the property and satisfying the statutory requirement of substantial hardship without substantial detriment to the public good. Grant of the requested variance will not result in a detriment to the public good as many nearby properties in the area of similar size, frontage, width, all with low detriment to the public, particularly 32 Hartford Ave East and 63A Hartford Ave East. Yeah, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but basically, he's, the attorney has pointed, pointed to statute to support the, their contention. pointed to statute to support the, their contention that the, uh, changes that they want to make are valid. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and my name is Frank Nero. Um, behalf of Dave Gorbey, the Principal of Pine Brook Computer, we present this application for variance, and as you summarized, uh, the intent of the applicant would, uh, with the granting of the variance would to be build a single-family home, one in which he would occupy. You've summarized my argument pretty thoroughly. And again, the property consists of 4.67 acres. It does have a strip of land that leads to it, but 117 feet of frontage, uh, and that it does share the similar characteristics of other parcels along Hartford Ave. Again, we believe that it does create a hardship for the applicant and that does not derogate from the intention, um, of the zoning bylaw, uh, and without detriment to the public good. So unless you have any questions, that's the applicant's petition.
I see there's some wet area there.
There's some wet area towards the back within the buffer zone. I would, uh, I don't have specifics, but I would say at least half of the park, probably close to 75%.
Okay.
And the house proposed location will be well, uh, distant from, uh, the border, uh, the river there and the wetlands.
What's the frontage here? I can't read it, too small.
What was that?
The frontage on the driveway or road you got running in there?
The frontage is 117.22 feet as it exists.
Uh, what's the width between the two lots back?
The width between what two lots?
The lot three and lot two. That's 45? I couldn't read that. My eyes are bad. All right.
And once again, generally I like to see on a plan, not only the proposed house, but also adjacent abutis houses and their location proximity to the proposed house. Do you have such a plan?
I do not. I, uh, as you may recall, I came before the board, uh, earlier this year, and we talked about that, about what the board would expect to see as part of that, and, um, it wasn't suggested at the time, I could provide it to the board if they prefer.
Alan, I'd like to, um, maybe make a note somehow that we can require that all applicants, when they're providing the house plan or building location plan, that they not only locate the proposed building, also show, uh, immediate abutis.
Probably should. This should show all the upland, though. You should have the square footage of the upland on this application.
The property is, uh, I don't disagree, the property is, uh, more than three times the size of the minimum lot requirements. Location of the house is going to be further away from any existing house.
I understand what you're saying, you know, but I mean, we can carry it with four acres of swamp, you know, if we just take everybody's word for it.
Sure. Again, that's why I came in front of the board in January, February.
I think we still wanted to see the uplands.
I think what would, what I'd like to do is, uh, perhaps continue this. Maybe we can add him onto the, since the, uh... When's the next meeting? Could you have a plan showing the uplands and the abutis by the? Did you say the 20th? By the 20th?
I could certainly ask, um, how detailed a plan would you like? Would a sketch work or?
Well, as far as the scale, has dimensions on it.
Sure, I can ask.
You know, either scale or dimensions.
Sure, I could ask, and, uh, if it wasn't ready for the 20th, we could, uh, do the following meeting if that were possible.
Yeah.
Sure.
So what time on the, he'd be the third one? About 7:40 on the 20th.
And so just the location of the houses, any information regarding upland?
Yeah, I'd like to see the uplands on here, show where the uplands are.
All right, I'll speak to the engineer and, uh, if there's anything else, let me know and, uh, appreciate your time.
The mill river is right there. I'd like to see it all.
As of now, right now, yes.
And the location of the proposed house?
I will, yes.
Driveways, et cetera. Get the driveway.
That's going to be in the drawing. Well in the septic when they do the uplands.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continue this meeting for 20th. All right, the next meeting is, uh, 44 Hartford Ave East, variance.
Set it right on a podium against the wall, maybe. Turn the podium around.
Pretty sure there's a tripod stand on the stage. Anything back left?
Thank you, Robert.
They just turn that bottom part up the other way, I think, no? That turn? No, it doesn't turn. Put it behind it. Put it behind the chair. Put that thing behind the chair so that it...
Okay. He's looking for a variance, seeking relief from Article Two, Section 2.01 and 2.01B of the bylaws, which requires a lot size of 60,000 square feet, 200 feet of, of width, seeks relief from driveway requirements. Applicant request variance to create two lots on the property with Lot A, frontage from 200 feet down to 131.44, and Lot B down to 74.88.
No, that's not correct.
Applicant request Lot B assessed through a shared driveway located on A. Property is located at 44 Hartford Ave East. Census map 18140, 44, and can be viewed in the town clerk's office. Nature of relief requested is, as again, which was just the changes outlined in the Notice of Public Hearing. Evidence to support grant a variance. The subject property is a large 5.29 acres, narrow approximately 205 by 760 feet, hammer-shaped parcel. It is bisected by a gas pipeline easement running diagonally from the front of the parcel to the back. Is affected by a pond at the front of the parcel and by wetlands across the front of the parcel. The parcel contains more than four times the minimum area for a single lot, but would be limited to development as one lot. The upland usable areas are split by the gas pipeline easement. The use of separate driveways within each lot would require multiple wetland crossings. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Robert Paxton with Gary Aaron Howland Engineering. I'm representing the applicant. And, um, as you outlined, uh, the parcel has 200 feet of frontage, 206 feet of frontage. And I think the, uh, public hearing notice is in error when it talked about what the frontage was going to be on both parcels. They both are 103 feet each. If you, the plan is, you know, the 130 is the distance that's not from the property line, it's from a, a drill hole that you see on that. So both lots are proposed to have 103 feet.
Maybe you could pull that down.
Yeah, I'm nobody close, right? Yeah. Okay, so both lots are proposed to have 103 feet of frontage. The, um, the, the lot to the left is got over, almost three acres.
Let's just back up again.
Yep.
So we get this frontage.
Yep.
Correct.
Yes.
Lot A, frontage is actually?
103.16 feet.
Okay, so it's shown correctly on the drawing, but incorrectly in the notice.
In the notice, correct, correct. It's shown correctly on the drawing, but the notice is incorrect, when it says one of them is 138 and the other one is 78.
Right. Alan, can you correct that, get that corrected, please?
So, like, you can see, if you see the plan that I, the colored plan here, the, um, the, the greenish-blue area is the, the wetlands that has been delineated. The, the, the blue area is the pond that's at the corner. If you know where this is, this is at the, this is, um, Bellingham Street is right, is right here.
It's that line, it's there. Gas line runs up here, this is the, uh, Cahill property. Um, what? Cahill Peaks, it's to the west of the, uh, property. And, um, and like you say, the, the gas line runs all the way through, so it's pretty much on a piece of property that's five acres long, where you'd be able to, if you wanted to develop it more than one lot, you'd be able to build a, a roadway with a cul-de-sac.
And get like probably three lots off it, but because of the features of the gas line coming through, you really can't do that. So the applicant would try to, to build a, a subject of those, but you just get two lots out of it.
And then the, uh, the, the idea of this intersection being located here, we would like to propose that there's a single driveway access on the, as far away from the intersection of about 150 feet possible coming in with about, um, I think I have 100 and, 195 feet of pond drive, which will then branch off to a single driveway here for 195, 190 feet. And this long drive in the back of it here would be 470 feet. But this, currently right now, we do propose, okay, the houses, uh, is played, which is all, I think, most of the lot, the lot we, we all, this is a long line, the majority is what we have, one of the half as well, the back, we don't need a lot of property. So we would hope that we would have to be able to try to get two houses here and see the variance from the frontage. Basically, it's just a frontage variance and, uh, with, uh, yeah. Actually, there's a line, the, the property as well, with the general residential in the front, this rural residential in here. It also makes it difficult to subdivide and, and develop, there's more than, more than the, what we're asking.
We would, we don't have, we haven't done topographical survey yet because we don't, you know, we, we want to make sure that we, if we, we don't know if we're doing it for one lot or two lots. There's been some preliminary soil testing done by another engineering company that shows that septic systems are viable in the, in this, on these lots. And there would be to the rear of each of these houses and the locations that they tested. They tested in two spots, didn't know whether or not the, you know, somebody who bought it, we're, we're going to build one house on the bigger piece or one house up in the front and leave the remaining piece in the back, there's something different. So if we could get relief to allow the two lots, um, that's pretty much what we're seeking here tonight. We would, um, we would leave the option of the driveway easement to the ADNR plan because until we have a topographical survey done, we may want to alter, we may want to find a better spot for it. There may be a better location than what I'm showing currently right now, as far as the topography at the wetlands and the, um, and the cut and crossing the gas easement. The gas company likes you to cross at a, at a 90-degree angle. They don't like you to go running like the long, or running with it or running diagonal across it. So if, if topographically allowed us to come down closer to the wetland and cut across and come up and shorten the length of this driveway, we would do that. So, um, we're not seeking anything other than permission to access both lots from the, from one lot frontage, but I don't, the, the, the location is not narrowed down right now. We'd like to make sure, you know, we, we get as far away from the intersection of Bellingham Street as possible, but, um, we, we don't know topographically what's going to be the best location currently.
The total lot, lot area right now is what?
What's that?
Total lot area is?
Total lot area is 5.3 acres.
That's, that's all upland?
No, you can see, you can see the, um, the, like I say, there's, there's some wetlands and a little bit of a pond, but the, um, you know, zoning requirement is 60,000 square feet of upland for a lot, and it doesn't even have to be contiguous. So there's obviously, we're going to have much more than that. The, the, the larger lot is 2.95 acres and the smaller lot is 2.35 acres, so. There's plenty of area there for buildability. And this is totally wooded area right now, so there's...
Well, you're waiting for right now, Bob, is the frontage.
Yes, so, so right now, we'd like to get, to get the variance for the frontage and, you know, and the access, the driveway access off of just one, single driveway access, but it's a service to lots.
What's the total length of the, uh, Lot A driveway?
The Lot A driveway, the total length would be the 195 feet of the common drive plus 470 feet to the house. And like I say, we would, we would seek to reduce that if possible, depending on the topography and if there's a better place to cross the gas line, you know, and get, you know, and, and so we would adjust that common drive easement for better, you know, to shorten things up and create less pavement as we could. But as I, as I said, that would be, once we got, if we got approval from this board to create the two lots, then we would do a topographical survey and then do an A and R plan to, to the planning board showing the easement that, you know, the, the actual final easement location. No, no. I mean, that, that was, that was something that the attorney had when he filled out the application and we finalized it. But both there, there are actually two driveway crossings. I mean, it's more of a safety issue having, if you know that intersection, having the second, having two driveways come out from now, from that piece of property that close to uh, Bellingham Street, Hartford Ave. intersection. I think it's, you know, I mean, if we, if, if we didn't, if we didn't get the, the approval to have this single driveway access, we could, we could still, we could still develop the lot. Both lots is just, you know, we just, it'd just be not as safe for the people who live on the.
So again, it's, we're talking about a driveway issue at this point.
Yes, yes. In, in the lot frontage and a driveway.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. And you need to identify your name and, and location.
Karen Brenneman, 40 Hartford Ave. So this lot cuts over after our property. We have several concerns we'd like to raise. Regarding evidence to support a random variance on the application, the 5.29 acre lot that was created following the appropriate zoning, guys, when I'm taking into consideration all the unique conditions of property, gas pipeline, multiple wetlands, the pond, et cetera. While the lot is oversized, these unique conditions are such that it's fairly suitable as one lot, let alone for two. Our first concern is having two households entering and exiting from the one shared driveway and something that would be totally dangerous. That Bellingham and Hartford Ave intersection is hard and challenging to address. Has there been any traffic study of what will happen, having two additional driveways going in and out of there? Secondly, the request of shared driveway is an impervious structure that will be crossing wetlands twice. Splitting off left and continuing to affect wetlands by coming within the 50 foot minimum for approximately 125 feet. Splitting off to the right, continuing to affect another wetland for approximately 75 feet. This would be in direct violation of the wetlands protection by law by not following the proper setback and changing the land's existing natural drainage characteristics, as well as causing the destruction of natural plant between wild by habitat. At a minimum, the building of this shared driveway will redirect the drainage, likely increasing the wetlands on my property or possibly creating more wetlands elsewhere. There's already a gas pipeline running through the wetlands. Has anybody done any study on how that has already affected these? And also, how will this additional driveway affect the drainage at the bottom of the property adjacent to 50 Hartford? That pond harbors floods. Additionally, two lots are allowed. How they're going to affect our water supply? There's already extensive new development on Amadon and Copper tapping into the neighborhood's natural water supply. Where are the secondary systems going to be located for the two of houses? How will the proximity of the leaching field affect the surrounding? According to the wetlands bylaw, the leaching field can't come within 100 feet of any wetlands. So I'm not sure where are the. I purchased the property knowing that there is a possible building on lot next to me and gladly welcome one neighbor with acceptable plans taking into consideration the unique conditions of the property. Allowing this lot to be split into two is in direct violation of the wetlands bylaw on multiple levels and not good standing with the feeling of the surrounding neighborhood, still re-saturating the lot and therefore greatly devaluing my property, which is my primary residence and my great. So you can understand my concern. And again, I would suggest what is my hardship on this application? If someone's for one lot, build, you know, for one house, build one house?
If I could respond to somewhat, I mean, it is, it is, it is not a guarantee that this board approves these two lots, that these lots are buildable under all these other bylaws that the town has regarding wetlands, stormwater and so forth. So, I mean, those aren't, those issues will still have to be addressed. If the developer would have to show, um, we'd have to do septic design plans and they'd have to meet all the Title V requirements. We would have to file notices of intent for any work that we're proposing that would alter any resource area or be within the 100 foot buffer of a resource area. So just because the lots are, are allowed to be created, doesn't guarantee the buildability of the lots. And here again, we're not, like I said, we, we're not, we're not seeking to have two driveways come out, but one. And, and whether it's one driveway for two houses or one driveway for one house, you're, you're not, you're not increasing traffic to the point where a traffic study should be required.
Did you understand what he was saying, ma'am?
I do. But, I mean.
Apparently, most of your concerns would be handled by other boards different from us.
Right.
So.
But obviously the intention, if it's allowed to have two buildable lots, they're going to try to do anything they can to build two houses?
So obviously they would.
Yes, that's why we came here.
We'll continue with their next step to the next board. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Brenneman, I live with Karen. So I have another 1040. So you say that these issues are going to be addressed in front of another board. Why shouldn't they be considered as a whole if you have to split it into two lots? You would have to understand whether or not there's enough room to, uh, install that septic system and those leaching fields and address all these other concerns costing the wetlands and affecting and how it affects those wetlands. That should be considered in their request to divide it into two lots. If they can't do all that, then it shouldn't be divided into two lots.
Like I said, it's not, it's not the expertise of this board to talk about wetlands, stormwater, septic design. As I said, you know, their, their approval of two lots does in no way guarantee that the applicant is going to be able to build two houses on this property. Uh, we, we, we've looked at it. We, just the enormous area of the lot and the distance that we have from the wetlands. Tells me that we'll be able to find a place to build septic systems and wells in accordance with Title V requirements and the state environmental code regarding wetlands. Uh, the preliminary, um, areas of crossings right now that we showed with, with the, um, use of retaining walls and culverts will be less than 1,000 square feet of altered wetland when you're, when you're allowed up to 5,000 square feet under the Wetland Protection Act. So, so we've taken, we've looked at these considerations and, um, we feel that it is worth it to attempt to provide, to, to establish these two lots and, and that we feel that they're very buildable as we, as we show them.
When I look at your, your, uh, plan and I measure it out according to the scales that provided on the plan, there is not enough room for that lower house on the right for you to put a septic system and a leaching field unless you put it uphill, which is. Okay. So why isn't it on the plan? Excuse me, I'm thinking. At the previous hearing, they questioned this guy to bring back the plan and then precedent plan to include where the septic is going to go on the leaching field. So why isn't your plan have that information?
Actually, we didn't. We, we asked for, was to show butter's houses, uh, the uplands. Where the uplands were. We, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't ask specifically where the well or the, uh, septic would go. So that was not part of that request.
You're only looking for a variance request to allow access. They're not looking for housing yet. That'd be another board hearing.
Right now, both houses, 130 feet of the course. 100, 100 feet, well, 100 feet of course as well. The house is just barely in the building. 230, not 250 feet of the area in front of ours. And the wetland act allows septic to be 250 feet.
Uh, not the law that I read online today says 100.
But you still have, you still have, uh, plenty of room to set this system. There's nothing that's going to get popped off.
Right. So I'd like to see that plan.
Well, see the, the applicant is not going to spend the money to, to, first of all, there's, there needs to be a complete topographical survey done on the property before you can do a design for a septic system, design the driveway grades, design everything. And until we know to the extent that we're going to do that, you know, he's not going to spend money to topo the entire process or if he's only going to put one house on it.
I, I understand that, but I don't understand why that, that kind of information is not taken into consideration with this request to divide this lot into two, into two to build these houses.
Because like I said, this board is not guaranteeing that there, you can build on these lots. They're just allowing you to have the two lots. They're not, but the, the allowance of them, the, the creation of the two lots in no way guarantees that the, the owner, that he can build two houses. He's, he's got a lot of hoops to jump through before he can get to that point. So it's, it's not, it's not this, this board's purview to look at septic's wells, wetland crossings. They're, they're, they're just, they're here to act on whether or not we should have, you should allow these two lots with less than the required frontage. They have more than enough area and, and, and really that's all we're asking. We're not asking them to, to say that we, the lots are buildable, that will be buildable in the future. Just, we'd like to have the opportunity to attempt it.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I'm making a motion to establish two lots of 79 44 Hartford Ave. 44 Hartford Ave for a common driveway for two lots, two proposed lots. Lot houses, proposed lots.
That? All in favor? Aye. Passed.
Thank you.
Two more?
And one.
One more.
Some of it?
I'll be right back. I just have.
Evening.
Good. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. Nice to not be on Zoom.
How are you?
Good to be out.
Had two long days. Left yesterday morning at four o'clock. Got home last night at 8:30. Go along with that. Rochester, New York.
Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
All right. Next is the application of Keith Usher of 179 Blackstone Street, Mendon, requesting a variance from Article Two, Section 201A and 201B for frontage for a residential single family lot to be a minimum of 200 feet and driveways to be wholly within the lot being serviced. Petitioner proposes to divide the property into four lots. Petitioner requests a variance on frontage lot, on frontage on Lot Three from 200 feet down to 94 feet. Petitioner requests the four lots be assessed from a shared driveway located on Lot Four. Property is located at 179 Blackstone Street. Assesses map 26108179 and can be viewed at the clerk's office. Nature of the relief again is what was just outlined in the notice of public hearing. Reducing the frontage down from 200 feet. Applicant is proposing to divide the property into four lots, three of which will be, will meet all bylaw dimensional requirements. Lot Three on the attached proposed plan lacks 200 feet of frontage and therefore requires dimensional relief. Furthermore, applicant requests relief from the shared driveway provisions of Section 201B. This would be to avoid further land and wet area disturbance by augmenting the access driveway currently servicing the existing house. Evidence to support grant a variance. This property could be subdivided under the Mendon subdivision rules and regulations. However, this request for variance relief would allow applicant to minimize further disturbance to the lowest, wettest points on the property closest to Blackstone Street. A shared private driveway is proposed will reduce cuts and, and fill and will not be as disruptive as installing a cul-de-sac construction to public roadway standards. Shape of the lot allows for sufficient frontage under the zoning bylaw for three conforming lots, but requires relief for a fourth. Each proposed lot has upland greater than the minimum required total. Each proposed lot has upland greater than the minimum required total lot area, but relief is needed for excess. This is a large property with significant dry upland, but access to the property approaches upbrook, thus creating soil, soil conditions similar to those existing in the RR district at large. Allowing all four lots access from one point on Blackstone Street will alleviate any potential traffic concerns on the public way and will similarly mitigate wet soil concerns. Is there actually a plan or am I missing a plan, Ellen?
I don't have a plan.
There's a plan as part of the.
I wanna get this little.
Yeah.
That's all we're given?
Yeah, I can't read it.
Do you have a big plan?
I didn't bring a big plan with me with the, I have a plan that doesn't have the scale on it, but it's. Unfortunately, this plan is maybe not enormous. So if you'd sense, and I'd be happy to go over the dimensions with you as well, but this is the one that would have 94.
Where's the common driveway?
The current driveway comes up through here and access to the existing house, and this is also an existing building.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
We postponed this nice hearing. Can you get all the information we need, this plan finished for the next hearing on the 20th?
We gotta see the driveway and.
You gotta show stuff. But you gotta show, you gotta show the driveway, you gotta show.
Yeah.
And the lot, I wanna see the square footage of the upland of the lot.
So we do have that on that plan, and I apologize.
I couldn't read that.
But it's over 60,000.
Oh, I don't doubt, I don't doubt that. Anyhow, we're gonna need a plan like this.
Okay.
If you can't make it for this one, but right now, we have three hearings on the 20th. So if you wanna be the fourth, more than happy to.
Yeah.
Can't make it, you give me.
Right.
Don't worry. So, so driveway locations, any abutters?
Um, the abutters within.
I don't think they have abutters there, really.
Well, we do in that, we have the chance to speak with the abutters who are closest. They live behind Lot 3 on Chapin Court. I think your house is, it's over 100 feet away, I would say, from any of the buildings, but, okay.
Well, I think they may be interested in seeing where they're.
Absolutely. I'm just wondering.
Where they probably lies with you.
I'd like to be in compliance with what the board would like. So how far from our locus would you like a abutters shown?
Being reasonable, you know, a few hundred, maybe a couple, a couple of 300 feet or something like that.
Okay, absolutely.
My, my main concern would be that you might have an abutter 15 to 20 feet from your property line or whatever.
Okay, and we'll show the existing driveway and also proposed how it would be augmented to serve four lots?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right.
And the upland?
Yeah, so the upland calculations right now are, they're estimated, basically.
Well, we don't expect to get down to the exact square footage.
Okay. All right. Again, I understand every one of these requests, I just wanna make sure that we're in compliance with what the board needs.
Yeah. I'm sorry I have to make you come back, but.
No, understood. And honestly, I wish I had seen the first few hearings where you asked for these specific things before, but now I know for next time I'm here.
Well, Ellen's gonna plug it in for all future applicants, so that that they're aware before they show up.
Okay, I'm not actually sure I introduced myself. I'm Eli Lano from Mayor Antonellis, Jackowitz, and Heranis, so worked with attorney Antonellis from your first hearing.
Okay.
And we will get everything accommodating the board here, and we will be back next meeting.
Okay, great.
So request to continue.
All right, thanks for the call.
Thank you.
20th?
20th.
That's John. Want to step up here, John?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about you.
I can't forget about.
All right, how you doing? What's your name?
John.
John.
John Familio.
Familio. All right, how are you? All right.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Tom, I see you.
You have any questions?
Not really, you know, I mean.
Why do you wanna be on the board? Why do you wanna put yourself through this? Why do you wanna put yourself through this?
I'm just here to help you with problems you might have.
Go ahead, answer. Me can take this seat.
There is one at 201. Ultimate vacancy.
Yeah.
But board, why don't you do?
Right, you got my blessing. I told him. You got John's blessing, then it's okay with me.
It's me.
I appreciate it.
So our next meeting is August 20.
Seven. You can show up at the meeting if you.
Yeah, you can still, yeah.
You can be here. Just can't say anything.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, John.
We'll see you.
Talk to you later. How's everything up there? How's everything at your house up there?
I love it up there.
Nice, beautiful. I was by there the other day. You were outside, going on.
Oh, was it, did you go back? Sorry, didn't want you to go back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lights off? Okay. Thank you for doing a good job, by the way.
This is what?
It's for, um.
I appreciate it, man, it's not easy.
You're going right along up there.
That's the one in the email, that was in the email today. I don't really have meeting minutes where you approve.
Yeah. Take your time.
Stuff from Graves Engineering, saying that they did certain site visits. Do I just keep this with the?
They've all paid, I think. Graves paid up, I think, I think.
There's another site visit. Yeah, I pay the bills.
Yeah.
So I've gotten these, but I, these are Potaniels, yeah.
Yeah, I know you've been up there, I've seen them there.
And then there's letters from other boards.
We should probably keep those with that file.
This file, Graves.
Okay, and I'll file these with Daniels Development?
Yes.
All right.
Where is the file these days?
Well, I have the most recent stuff in my office right now. I know really old stuff is next door.
The cabinet that used to, used to have.
Yeah.
That I have a key somewhere.
Oh, do you? Maybe you might want to find that, but I can't go over there until the police station is done. But.
Not that I need to sit, I just brought it up as, you know, it's, at some point, it should be all together with everything.
It should be all together and as much as we can scan it in to permanently save it.
Yes.
But next year's a non-election year, maybe that'll be, we'll do that. And.
Ellen, I didn't tell you, there's three cabinets right inside the old library, correct me if I'm wrong here.
Right next door here?
Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff piled on top, too. That's where all the ZBA's.
ZBA's all over there, planning?
Top, yeah.
Upstairs?
Upstairs, in the second door, kinda near where the circulation is.
Okay. In the library?
Yes.
Upstairs.
Utilization technology at the beginning there, man. Way to balance that, that was good. Way to work that in coming.
That's a pain in the neck, though, having.
All right, make most of it adjourned.
Oh, that's.